Chalgriego, CBS News Colorado morning anchor, and it is my honor to bring you this Denver Public Schools Board of Education candidate debate. So these school board elections are critically important to our children's future and the future workforce of our great city. I myself am a proud graduate of DPS, George Washington High School. I also went to DPS from first grade on to high school, and I'm very grateful for the opportunities DPS afforded me. So this debate tonight is being hosted by Regis University and presented together with Chalkby Colorado, CBS News Colorado, and Educate Denver. We are also grateful to have the support of community partners, including the Colorado Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the Colorado Black Chamber of Commerce, and Faithbridge. So co-moderating the debate with me is Melanie Asmar, Bureau Chief of Chalkby Colorado, and Melanie covers DPS for Chalkby. Melanie and I will be questioning the candidates tonight. We also have questions that have been submitted by the public, including questions from students within the district. So it is very important that each of the four debates we host tonight run on time and that the debate structure is adhered to so voters can receive the insights to make informed choices. The at-large race debate to be decided by all the city's voters will go first. It'll last 45 minutes. The district races will follow, and you can see all the races streamed live on the CBS Colorado YouTube channel. Other seats contested this November are District Four, representing Northeast Denver, District Three, representing Central Denver, and District Two, representing Southwest Denver. Each candidate will be given a minute to respond to the question, and each candidate will be given one rebuttal, and that will be limited to 30 seconds. And then we'll end each debate with each candidate providing a 30-second closing statement. So we have some strict rules here tonight. In the at-large race, we have Amy Klein-Mulk and Alex Magagna. The name for candidate Deborah Sims-Fard will appear on the ballot. However, she has dropped out of the race due to an injury. So Amy and Alex, I want to welcome you here tonight, and thanks to each of you for being here. And with that, we are ready to begin. My colleague from Chalkby, Melanie, will ask the first question.
Thank you. What is the biggest issue facing DPS? And how would you address it? Alex, we'll start with you.
The biggest issue, there's two issues. One is the structures that they have in place for the policy governance of not able to holding ourselves accountable for the academic outcomes of our students. That takes me to the second piece. We need to do a better job to ensuring that all kids are succeeding in our schools. We need to have disaggregated data where it shows all kids are increasing their academically and also getting the supports they need socially and emotionally. We have too many gaps in our education where we have our white students highly outperforming our black and brown students, yet they have the same starting point, and that's not okay. We need to break that down, ensure that our educators, our teachers, have the resources that they need and that our students have the supports that they need so that they are successful.
Okay. So the biggest issue facing our district is that we need to rebuild trust, and we need to do that by ensuring that every single student has a great neighborhood school where their needs are met and where they have the resources to thrive. We need to make sure that we have smaller class sizes and that we're really supporting our educators with real resources and fair pay. And finally, we need to be creating schools that are future-ready and able to protect our students. Students cannot work, learn if they do not feel safe and do not feel prepared for the future. And it is our job to ensure that we are creating a community of trust, a trust where our community feels great about sending their students to school, a community of trust where our teachers feel great that they are supported, and a community of trust where our students feel that they are prepared and ready for the future ahead.
Amy, thank you. So the next question, I'll ask you first. Enrollment in DPS is declining, and DPS also has a policy that calls for closing schools with low test scores. So would you vote to close a school with low enrollment or low test scores? Why or why not?
No, I would not. So first of all, we need to look at why are our schools are declining in enrollment, and we need to fix that problem. We need to work with what we have, and we need to rebuild the schools that we have so that they are successful, so that they are delivering for every single student. Also, test scores alone are not a fair evaluation of how our students and our educators are doing. We need to be looking at growth. We need to be looking at attendance. We need to be looking at how our students are doing socially and emotionally, and we need to take all of those data points, and then we make a decision on how our schools are doing. But the most important thing is making sure that we get the resources into every single school. And we can do that. I've done it. It takes a lot of creativity, and we need to roll up our sleeves and find resources where there is scarcity, and we can make that happen.
We've known about this problem for the past 10 years, and we still have not come up with a solution. And we still have the problem that overall in the district, we have down in our enrollment. We need to be proactive and go ahead and set systems in place to see how we are going to do everything we can not to close schools. But that requires that we look at throughout, where are the students going? What options do we have? Are we working with the city? Are we working with the city and the district to ensure that we are doing the right thing of not closing? So it cannot be on just test scores. It cannot just be on enrollment. The district accountable. The board is accountable to ensure how do we prevent that from happening? We've known this for 10 years. Why, principals, as a principal, if I knew my enrollment is going down, I'd go ahead and start making adjustments now, yet we haven't done that, and that's going to be a high priority as a board member.
Thank you, Alex. We'll start with you for this next question. The school board oversees the superintendent, and that topic came up frequently in questions submitted by the public. Is DPS Superintendent Alex Marrero doing a good job? Why or why not?
Is he doing a good job? Is he meeting all the goals that we have set forth? Overall, he's doing the job that he was hired to do. But if we look at academic data, are all kids growing? Do we have a high, a big gap between our black and brown students and our white students? If we take those measures, we'd say, no, it's not. Now let's talk about climate of the school or the safety in the school. Have there been safety issues that have occurred that could have been prevented? Yes. Therefore, is he doing a good job? The answer is no. But I'm going to push on this. We need to hold the board accountable for monitoring the superintendent. That's the role of the board. The board needs to set clear goals around academics, around safety and security, around culture, around professional development, and ensuring that all of our kids are succeeding, and the board has not done their inadequate job. So the superintendent is doing what he was assigned to do. Overall, he's missing it, but you'd have to take a look at what measures he was given to determine if he was really doing a good job.
The board's job is to create the vision that then is executed by the superintendent. And the superintendent has done their job in fulfilling that mission, in meeting their goals, and in creating an environment where our students are, we're seeing success rise again in a post-pandemic world. When we look at someone and how they're performing, it needs to be something that we evaluate with lots of different data points. We need to engage our community. We need to ask our community how they feel the superintendent is doing. We need to ask our teachers how the superintendent is doing. We need to ask our principals how the superintendent is doing. And we need to take all of those data points and do thorough reviews and give thorough recommendations on how the superintendent can continue to thrive and where they continue to grow. That is how we create a great system.
Amy, thank you. This next question, we're going to start with you. So DPS has taken steps to protect students from immigration enforcement in and around schools, even suing the Trump administration. How do you think the district should approach this issue?
I think the district is doing a phenomenal job at approaching this issue, and I think we have to continue to go hard. This is not something that we can back down from. Our schools should be a safe place for our students and for our communities. It should be a place where kids can go to get meals. It should be a place where kids can go to learn, and it should be a place where kids can go to get the emotional supports that they need. So not only do we need to continue to fight against this administration, but we also need to be equipping our schools with the resources so that they can truly support these communities with social-emotional efforts, wraparound services, connecting them to lawmakers and to people who can protect them. This is something that is so incredibly important, and our schools play a vital role in protecting our immigrants and our immigrant students. And I cannot tell you how important this is to me, and I will fight very, very hard to continue down this path.
As a person that grew up in Mexico, I can't imagine what the kids are feeling and experiencing. Just yesterday, we had the FBI showing up to one of our students' homes, and then I showed up. The problem is real, and I've been fighting from day one on the issues. Has DPS done things? Yes. Can we do more? Absolutely. And that's what we need to continue to do. We need to provide additional resources to our families. We need to create that safe space, but we should not have students in fear. I sat in a library with 50 families looking at me, and I can tell you right now, half of them have probably been deported. What does that say about our democracy? We need to stand up. We need to work together. We need to work with our city. We need to work with the state to ensure that we are creating that safe space for our students because education doesn't have boundaries. We educate all of our kids.
Thank you, Alex. This next question, we'll start with you. School safety also came up a lot in questions submitted by the public. How should DPS protect students from gun violence? What should happen to students who bring guns to school?
As a principal for several years and an educator for the past 25 years, the first thing that we need to do is ensure that we have clear systems at every school, that we look at the infrastructure as students are walking in, and we work with our community around doing that. And we talk to our teachers that are in the building, and we talk to our principals that are in the building to find the gaps. That's the first thing. The second is we need to educate our teachers on the look force and make sure that our kids never go home with fear. Our students have a lot, know a lot of information through social media. There are systems in place that should be capitalized. For example, the Safe to Tell. Utilize that on an ongoing basis so that we create that. And now as far as for students that are bringing guns into school or have any type, we need to have an alternative programming to ensure that all kids are safe. And that means that we will need to have other resources outside of the school as opposed to putting our teachers, our principals, and our students in fear and possible danger.
Do you mind repeating the question?
Of course. How should DPS protect students from gun violence? And what should happen to students who bring guns to school?
So we know in order to really make change, we have to invest in mental health supports for our students. That is how we actually break the cycle of violence. We need to increase the amount of mental health workers we have in schools. We need to bring down class sizes so that teachers can have real relationship with students and help identify the problems before they arise. We also need to make sure that, sorry, the clock is not going. We also need to make sure that we have restorative practices. So when we do have SROs in schools, that they are trained, that they are there to be mentors, not to police. And if a student brings a gun to school, we must have an alternative for them. We cannot have students in danger at school. So we must make sure that that student has the mental health supports they need. If they need some type of rehabilitation, we need to help that happen right away. And then we need to do our very best to get them back into the school where they belong so that they can continue to thrive with the supports that they need.
Amy, thank you. We're going to take a quick break. We'll be right back. Welcome back, and we're going to continue our questioning in the at-large race with Amy Klein-Mulk and Alex Magagna. So our next question is a special question. It comes from a student. Amy, we're going to start with you. This question comes from Jack Baker, a junior at Thomas Jefferson High School and a Faithbridge student fellow. So Jack asks, "What policies do you plan to introduce to ensure the fiscal health of DPS and to monitor the equitable distribution of resources to all schools?"
It's a wonderful question, and it is extremely important. So yes, the most important thing we can do to bridge this gap within our school system is to make sure that our schools are funded equitably. And so we have to look at the unique needs of every single school in the district, and we have to see where those schools need supports and where they are succeeding. And then from there, we have to create policy that actually makes sure that we are giving students the funding that they need based on their background. So it cannot always be based on per pupil funding. It needs to be based on the actual needs of our students. So what we need to do is we need to go and we need to talk to communities. We need to talk to leaders in the schools. We need to talk to teachers. We need to talk to students, and we need to understand what their unique needs are. Once we do that groundwork, we can come together and think about where we can find that money within the budget and then where we can reallocate it. We also absolutely have to look at the way that we're drawing lines in DPS and boundaries. It's something that hasn't been looked at for a while. It's being looked at now, and I think we need to continue doing it.
You might repeat the question.
Not at all. "What policies do you plan to introduce to ensure the fiscal health of DPS and to monitor the equitable distribution of resources to all schools?"
Well, as a principal for the past, or educator for the past 25 years, I see the inequities in our schools, and I see the inequities in several of our schools. I'll take my schools. You look at one school, Grant Middle School. You drive five miles. The second school is not kept up at the same level as the first school. What does that say? The bar is not the same. So it shouldn't depend on the area, whatever else. Every school should be at a high quality. We are fortunate to have voters that are supporting our schools through the bond. We need to put that money into the schools and make them state-of-the-art schools for our kids. A couple of things. I sat on the state task force, and there is a budget formula there where we focus on the needs of our students, students in IEPs, at-risk students. And that formula still exists in our, at the district level. So we need to identify what are the needs of the schools, ensure that all schools have the supports that they need in the classroom to maintain that physical safe environment for our students.
Thank you both. This next question, we'll start with you, Alex. "The Trump administration has requested that DPS get rid of its all-gender bathrooms or risk losing federal funding. What should the district do?"
Well, some of the stuff that they're doing now is fighting back, and we shouldn't be bullied because it's questioning our values of who we are. The Trump administration is bullying districts by the funding that they're providing at the federal government. At that point, what are our values? And then how do we make up that 10%, 8% from the federal government? We need to make sure that we are doing what we think is right for our kids. Now, you take a look at a $1.5 billion budget, and then you take 10%. Can we figure out how to make that? Can we work with the city? Can we work with the state? Can we start challenging the state on even things like taper and going, hey, we need more funding in our schools because this is what the Trump administration is pushing on it. Don't we want high-quality schools? Therefore, let's be proactive in solving this, not give in to a bully. And that's what I would bring to the board.
We absolutely should be protecting our students, and we should be protecting our decisions to have all-gender bathrooms. We will not back down to a bully. I will not back down to a bully, and this is just the beginning. And anytime we are looking at an administration that has ties to billionaire dollars, to special interests, to trying to politicize anything having to do with human rights, we are in huge trouble, and we have got to fight against that. And so we really have to question who is on the board. What is their experience? Where do their values lie? Do their values lie in protecting students and our teachers? Or do their values lie in politicizing our school system by taking money from billionaire corporations? We have to stop it now.
Amy, thank you. "Does the school board spend enough time discussing student academic data? Why or why not? And if not, what would you propose the board do?"
If I could just add to the part that she can respond. One is, we need to respect the board members that are there and the intention. Also, I'm going to call out my 25 years of experience of putting students first when we're talking about values. Now, I'll take the question.
Was that a rebuttal? I'm confused of process here.
No, I was responding because I was using my time.
Okay, so I'm going to ask Amy the question. We're going to start with Amy.
It's my question.
Yes. So, "Does the school board spend enough time discussing student academic data? Why or why not? And if not, what would you propose the board do? And we'll start your clock over."
Thank you. We do spend a lot of time analyzing data. That is for sure. And I know the data is key. I have a vast background from classrooms to boardrooms. I have done it all. I do not come here with one lens. I have seen it all. And so when we look at data, it's so incredibly important that we desegregate that data, that we understand it, that we poke every last hole in it. Because when we do that, when we fully understand the data, and not just test scores, I am talking about attendance. I am talking about the well-being of our students. I am talking about how our teachers are doing, if they are doing, you know, special teachings and all different things to make themselves better. All of these points of data need to inform us in how we make decisions to guide the vision of the district. And again, I want to be really clear. That is our job as a board, is to guide the vision.
The answer is no. We're celebrating data, which we should. But help me understand why we have, our black and brown students are not reading at the level of our white students with the same starting point? Are we talking about data? I've sat in board meetings, and that data is not being talked about on a consistent, consistent basis where we're holding ourselves accountable. That's the job of the board. That's the work I've been doing for the past 25 years. As a principal, I was held to the data. As teachers, we're held to the data. If schools are underperforming, we look at the teacher. We look at the principal. That's the same expectation for anyone that is working in the district. So, and the other piece is, we would establish is right now, when we're looking at data, board members, from my understanding, have to request, have a majority vote to request for additional data. That should be fully transparent and available to all families and disaggregate the data. And the second piece is, what is the scorecard? There should be a clear scorecard that is transparent and broken down by subgroups, not interpreted by a few members. It's available to everyone, from parents to students and to our schools and to our educators.
I'd like to rebuttal, please. Thank you. So in full transparency, I have been looking at all of the schools' work that they've been doing. And Alex, I'm curious. I've noticed that there are students in your school, mostly students who come from lower-income backgrounds and also students with disabilities, who are not succeeding. And with 14 years of experience leading your school, I'm wondering, why is that still happening? Why is there still a gap at your school? And what are you doing to fix it?
Well, let's not insult all the teachers and educators that show growth because we were one of the highest-growth schools in the district. We're a high-performing school. Also, keep in mind that our kids are coming in at 11% proficiency at elementary, and those are traditional schools. They're coming in at 12% at math proficiency, and those are traditional schools. So now, talk to me about how our eighth-grade students are hitting 70 MGP, the median growth percentile, and our black students are performing at a higher level than students, than eighth-grade students in the district level. That's the work that we're doing.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you, Amy. This next question is also about academic data. We'll go to you first, Alex. "Several questions submitted by the public asked specifically about the achievement of black and Latino students. What policies would you support or what direction would you give the superintendent regarding the education of black and Latino students in particular?"
I would suggest some of the work that my schools have done. We created, we partnered with organizations to bring robust libraries. We partnered with organizations to educate our parents. We partnered with organizations to provide high-level training to our teachers, and that's why we're closing the gap with our Latino students. Those are some of the things that I would put in place. It comes down to, if our black and brown students are not performing at the level, do the teachers have the training that they need? Are the resources available to the teachers? And do they know their cultural identity? And do they know the identity of the kids? We have predominantly white teachers in our district. They all want to make an impact on our kids, but they also need to know how to meet the needs of all students. And that's ongoing professional development and supporting our educators.
Do you mind repeating the question? Thank you.
Of course. "What policies would you support or what direction would you give the superintendent regarding the education of black and Latino students in particular?"
Yeah, I think first and foremost, we need to be creating great schools for every single student, regardless of the color of their skin. I also think that we need to be focusing on making sure that we are developing curriculum that is reflective of all of our students. We need to be recruiting and maintaining great teachers that reflect our communities. And we need to incentivize them. We need to train them. We need to make sure that they have all of the resources that they need. We also need to make sure that we are looking at the unique needs of our communities. I was just out in the southwest today talking to a bunch of amazing kids who are telling me about this robust mentoring program that has changed everything for them. So we need to be making sure that we are putting in extracurriculars, that we are putting in mentoring programs, and that we are helping students who need the extra support no matter what. Because in four years, when I sit here for reelection, I want to be able to say, we did the work and we solved the problem.
Amy, thank you. So we'll start with you on this question. "The school board has limited the amount of time allotted at the meetings for public comments. Do you agree with that decision? Why or why not?"
Our community needs to have the voice that they deserve in sharing with the board what is going on and with informing our decisions as policymakers. So we have done a lot of work to talk about how we're going to create policy around engagement, and we have watched the board out in the community doing that hard work and making the change. And I am really proud of that. We need to make sure that every person has the amount of time that they need to talk about what they need to talk about. And also, we need to understand that there is only so much time that we have for a board meeting. So I think it's a nuanced question. I think that we are taking steps in the right direction to engaging our community in the appropriate ways. And I want to see our community show up. I have been to so many engagement sessions, and I think that we need to encourage our community to come out, to have a voice, and we need to listen to them.
There was a school that was closed in southwest Denver, and our families showed up. They did the right thing. There were several families with their kids. The families were pushed up to the 14th floor and were not permitted to talk to the board. What message are we sending there? Are we getting community input? It's not there. Certain people get input, not the families that we're serving. So we need to have clear policies that we will listen to our community. We will relook at how we're doing public comment. And if it's so much time, that's okay. If it's so much time, let's do our job correctly, and so then people aren't showing up to public comment. That's how you focus on the community. And then you do a lot of outreach and talking to the people, and not only the community. How about we talk to the principals? How about we talk to the teachers that are spending countless hours in the schools? A lot of times, they have the answer, A lot of times, they have the answer, and those are the things that we need to put in place.
Alex and Amy, thank you very much. With that, we're going to take another quick break. We'll be right back. Thank you, and welcome back to our At Large Candidate Debate for the Denver School Board with candidates Alex Magany and Amy Klein-Mulk. For this next question, we'll start with you, Alex. DPS has a mix of district run and charter schools, and several audience members and students submitted questions on this topic. What is your opinion of charter schools?
Charter schools are public schools, and the bar needs to be high where all schools are high performing and meeting the needs of the kids that are in that community. There's a reason for charter schools. There's a reason for innovation, or there's a reason for magnet schools. But charter schools, innovation schools, those are all public schools. So I feel about it is, as long as they are serving the needs of the students academically, socially, and they're working with the community, and that's what the community is demanding, then I'm not sure why that question would exist. Because most families and parents aren't worried about charter school or innovation school. They're just want good quality schools in, that they have available to them that meets the needs of their kids.
As I've been out in the community, talking with everyone, the universal thing that I hear from everyone is I want a great, safe school for my child where they can succeed and grow. And so we have to put this whole thing to rest, and we have to focus on how we are going to hold schools accountable. We have to focus on how we are going to make sure that every single school in our district, regardless of the kind of school it is, is delivering on the promise that we have created for the students in our district. Because that is our job. Education is the foundation of democracy, and we have to do that now. We have to educate our students no matter what kind of school they are in. But the only way we can do that is with true transparency and accountability. Competition has no place in our school system. We need to be working together, and we need to be building a strong district.
Amy, do you believe school choice or the ability for students to choose any public school is a good thing? Why or why not?
I do believe choice can be a good thing. I think that parents often know what is best for their children, and we need to trust them in that. We do not have a real choice system, though. We have a ranking of 12 schools that you may or may not get in. So if we are going to actually have a choice system, a choice system, then let's have everyone get their first choice. And the way we do that is by ensuring that every single neighborhood has a great school that every single child can access. When we do that, we have real choice.
I agree that there needs to be school choice based on the needs of the kids. It's important that, there's a lot of great programs for magnet programs, charter schools, innovation schools, specific programming that best meet the needs of our kids. We should also have, and as far as my kids went to their neighborhood schools, but there was a point in time where they could not go to their neighborhood school because it was not meeting the needs of their children, of their needs. And so school choice is a law. It's not something that we get to opt in and out of. It's a law that we were following, that we can improve on, but that's something that we need to continue to support.
Alex and Amy, thank you. So now we're going to move into a lightning round. So candidates, raise your hand if you agree with the following statements. There are going to be a few. Denver Public Schools is headed in the right direction. Denver High School should have armed police officers stationed inside.
It depends. Oh, inside, did you say inside?
Inside.
Oh, can I retract that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Students should be called by their preferred names and pronouns. Parents should be allowed to opt their children out of lessons they disagree with. Cell phones should be banned in schools. The school board should hire its own attorney when it negotiates the superintendent's contract. Amy and Alex, thank you for that lightning round. We're going to move into closing statements now, so each candidate will have 30 seconds for a closing statement, and Amy, we'll start with you.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here, and thank you for those who have tuned in. This is extremely important. I have spent over two decades working as an advocate for education. I have been in the boardroom. I have been in the classroom. I have started two education companies, and what I have done is I have worked to solve really big problems with stakeholders across the board. And we have done that by listening to community, by hearing what people need, and then by helping build coalition to solve problems. When there is scarcity, I find resources. That is something that we must do as board members. We must be creative. We must not be afraid to roll up our sleeves and do the hard work, just like I did when I became a special ed paraprofessional. I knew our kids, our most vulnerable kids needed support, and so I did the hard work that needed to be done, and I will continue to do that on the board.
Thank you, Regis, CBS4, Chalk B, Educate Denver. And thank you for being here, and thank you for everyone that's watching. I've spent the past 25 years in education, supporting our students. But I'm going to start with a quote. "The future of our democracy depends on our ability to educate all kids." That's why I'm running, and that was from President, former President Barack Obama. We need to do better. Our kids deserve better, and I've always done the work to serve, to serve our kids as a teacher, as a principal, and as an executive director. I have created, I have turned schools around by working with community. I have even replicated schools. When I had a mom come to us and say, yo quiero estar para mis hijos, I want this for my kids, and sure enough, we replicated that model. I came from Mexico, and my family traveled all over, and we didn't have much. I represent 60% of the students here in Denver. And regardless, I'll continue to fight for our kids, just like I've been fighting from day one, because our kids deserve something. And the only reason that I'm here is because somebody believed in me, and I'm going to do the same for every kid in Denver. Thank you.
Alex and Amy, we want to thank you for taking the time out today and answering all of those questions. That concludes this debate, but if you are watching on the CBS Colorado stream, we want you to stay with us for the District Four, Three, and Two races, and we are streaming live on the CBS Colorado YouTube channel. We're going to be right back with the District Four debate.